Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please? Welcome to the regular May meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. We'll ask that the appellant come forward and be seated in the chairs to my right. We'll swear you in and then hear whatever testimony that you would like us to hear. We ask that the appellants confine themselves, if at all possible, to a 10-minute interval when they make their presentations. We will then ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in favor of the appeal, and also anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to the appeal. That we normally ask people to confine their testimony to a five-minute increment when they are making those comments. And we have a long agenda tonight, so please keep those who are behind you and the agenda in mind when you speak and be as brief as you can. Following the testimony, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from their office, and then if there has been any evidence offered that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification. We ask that they not introduce new arguments at that time prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. In most cases, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next one. We have, the first case this evening is case 0040-2023-74-Stor Street, Opportunity Corridor Performance District, Brixmore Capital, SCLLC owner. The owner wishes to install building signage which exceeds the maximum area allowed and seeks a variance to Article 2869B permitted building signs to install combined sign area of 47 square feet. Do we have somebody from, please come on up. Yep, that's fine. Let me swear you in. You swear to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Very good. We need to take care of a piece of business before you testify, which is because this case is a second go-round and the board denied the variance before, we have, we're required to decide on whether or not this is a materially different appeal. All the board members, I assume, have had a chance to look at the submission?
Yes.
Starting at your end of the table, Nick, does it look like a different appeal to you?
Yeah, it does. They're asking for substantially less square footage for the sign, so to me, that's a new request.
I agree.
I agree.
I also agree.
Okay, can I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? There is deafening silence in the room. Please proceed.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight.
And would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, so my name is Courtney Bizarian. I work for Portsmouth Sign, and I am here on behalf of the customer. So we did have a variance, I think it was back in January, and we had allotted, I think it was 94 square feet. It was denied. We came back to get one sign installed, and that is at 22.34 square feet. The allowance for this building is 23.5 square feet. During that meeting, it was brought up that because there are two entrances to this building, there is one in the back with the parking lot, and then there's one on Store Street, that the board wanted us to have two signs. So we, I think that from that meeting, it was discussed that you wanted to see how those signs would look on the building at the different sizes so that we could decide upon what was the approved size for this area.
Okay. You are requesting a variance, I believe. Was it just one?
A variance.
Okay. Can you touch on the points?
In your application? Do you have?
In your application for justification for variance?
I believe the justification was that we initially came with two signs. It was denied. We came back with one sign, and then during that meeting, it was that we actually needed two signs, so it was approved with the caveat that we needed to come back to get the second signed, second sign approved for Store Street so that there would be a sign in that entrance.
What we actually need to hear from you is the rationale for a variance at all. In other words, if you need a sign that's bigger than the ordinance would ordinarily allow, or if you need more signs or more total square footage than the ordinance would ordinarily allow, we need to know what's special about your particular case that makes that true.
So what's special about this case is that there are two entrances to the building, one on Store Street and one with the parking lot, so we do need to allow signs. And then with the sizes that were approved for the first sign, we would go over, unless we went with one square foot, which would be very, very, very small, we will go over the allotted 23.5 square feet.
Are there questions from the board?
Do you happen to know, and if not maybe anyone here knows, that the, which is, which lot is 74? Because obviously, that's a large complex going all the way back to the market basket. Is that all one lot, or is that, is 74 just a little slice of that?
It's the middle lot, so the Xfinity Building is between 110 Grill, and then I don't remember what's to the left of it, but it's that middle building that Xfinity will be in. So it's the new buildings that were done on Store Street with the 110 Grill.
How many total, is it going to be two new buildings? Two new structures with several occupants in each?
I think it's one building with several occupants in each, the way it's done.
I think it's one with three.
Yeah.
I think it's five.
Oh, is it five?
Yeah, because there's Xfinity, T-Mobile, Starbucks, Playables, and 110 Grill.
Yeah, the Playables was the one to the left of it, yeah.
So I know this is coming up, but there's another application tonight from the same applicant for 70 stores. Is that a different lot?
It's the same owner, because it's all the same building.
So each different tenant?
Each building has its own address.
Yes.
Oh, so it's the same lot?
Each tenant has its own address.
Same lot, but a different address?
Yes.
Okay. So since it's the same lot, why aren't they consolidated for one year?
Because it's two different applicants. Same owner, but the applicant is different. What you have on the, the tenant is the owner.
Oh, because each tenant is, I see. So it's the tenant who's the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, you're good.
I, you're applying for two signs, unless I'm misreading these photographs, I see only one?
We already did one sign, so when we came back, I think it was a month ago, we got one sign approved. The meeting was February 27th, if I remember correctly. So we had that sign approved, but during that meeting, there was a caveat of we can get this approved, but we need a second sign on Store Street.
I got it, okay. No reason to assume I would remember what we did.
(laughing).
Okay.
Yes, please.
So to clarify, we have photographs on page seven and on page nine of the packet here with the Xfinity one substantially larger on page nine than on page seven.
Correct. We just wanted to show you, because during that meeting, you all had asked to see what the sign would look like at the different sizes. So we are, we would like the largest size, but we also want to show if we get the small size, what it will look like on the building. So I think we provided three different photos of, one's 47.33 square feet, one's 36.23, and then the smallest is 22.34, which is the same size as the one that we currently have up on the parking lot side.
You know which page that's on?
The smallest one? It should be on the page nine.
Page nine looks bigger than page seven, though.
So on the summary of signage, it gives three different, sign one, sign 1.0, and sign 1.2. The first one's 24.65, 1.1 is 19.10, and 1.2 is 12.25. Which one are you looking for?
We're looking for the largest one.
The 24.65?
Yes.
So does that then bring us to 47 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. So the agenda addresses the largest sign?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure how to put in the application, because when we had that meeting last, it was, can you show us all three to just see what the different sizes are? So it doesn't allow you to break that up in the permit, unfortunately.
Well, typically, we only approve one thing, and we usually only ask for one thing.
Okay.
But what you have asked for is the most, the largest violation, so assuming we granted that, that's okay. It's covered by the agenda. Any other questions from the board?
Can I ask Dr. Hutton another question?
You certainly can.
I thought the, if I'm not mistaken, isn't the maximum area allowed for signs for the total lot?
No, it's the linear frontage of the building.
Oh, it's for each building?
For each building. So each storefront has its linear frontage, and that's what we base the square footage of the sign area on.
But being this is one building?
It's the tenant's space. So if you, the picture I have up?
Yeah.
It would be that, the linear footage of that frontage.
Oh, I see, you divide it up by, so, okay.
Yes.
So it's not, so the, so a landlord couldn't say, well, we're going to decide to have one huge sign and give that to one tenant. They, it has to be divided up by each occupant?
By occupancy, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I believe you're coming back, right?
Don't go anywhere.
No, you can say.
I'll leave there, but don't leave early.
Are you coming back for the other case as well?
No.
No, the other case isn't mine.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
They went to brand, they went to brand X Sign Company, did they? Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement? With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. Andrew, how does this look to you?
Well, I, my inclination is to grant it because it's, it's a fairly unique lot. It's part of the city's kind of concept for this area, and I think having, this seems more like functional signage than trying to like kind of hog extra advertising space in that area. I mean, this seems like an appropriate size for what would be needed to direct traffic in that area. So I think the hardship is met because a smaller sign would be not really fitting with the concept of that area and might be hard for traffic.
I think all five variance criteria are met. I think, given the location and the configuration of the building, there are special circumstances that render the property somewhat unique. Limiting them to one additional square foot of signage is not reasonable, and having a sign of 24 some odd square feet on both sides does seem reasonable. It's consistent with other existing signs in the area, and certainly with other proposed signs in the area. There's no gain to the public from the denial of the variance, and I don't see where this would diminish the value of surrounding properties.
Ted, how do you look at it?
I have nothing to add to that.
You guys missed me last month, didn't you?
And I agree. I can see my job's going to be easy tonight. I also agree. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, and the variance is granted. And that brings us to our second case this evening, which is 70 Store Street, OCP Opportunity Corridor Performance District, Brixmore Capital, SCLLC owner. The owner wishes to install building signage which exceeds the maximum area allowed and seeks a variance to Article 2869B permitted building signs to install combined sign area of 69.8 square feet, where 21 square feet is allowed. Do we have someone here from Brixmore for 70 stores? All right. I'll tell you what we'll do, then. If that person comes in later, what we'll do is set this case aside, and if they come in later, we will, we'll take it up. Can I have?
I was just thinking, should we ask if anyone else has come? Because I don't know if anyone else came to speak on that case.
Good point, good point. Is there anyone else here who intended to speak on the subject of this case? Not a huge amount of interest in this case. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this case until later in the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one is opposed, I assume? Then that case, set that one aside, and if someone from Brixmore comes in to visit with us, we'll be ready. And that brings us to case 0042-2023, Bow Street, RN Neighborhood Residential District. John Reardon is the owner, and he wishes to construct a single-family dwelling and seeks variances to Article 2841H Table of Dimensional Regulations to allow the use on a lot, one that has 77 feet of frontage where 80 feet is required, and two with a lot size of 5,924 plus or minus square feet where 10,000 square feet are required. Mr. Reardon?
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Dolder.
How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Great, thanks.
May I swear you both in, please?
Sure.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but.
Absolutely.
Could you identify yourselves for the record, please, as you testify?
Sure. My name for the record is Maria Dolder. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant, and with me is John Reardon. All right, so this property is located on Bow Street. It's within the residential district, and it is a densely populated residential neighborhood. According to the City of Concord's assessors' records, a residential camp was established on this property back in 1920. Although the city now does consider the residential camp as being abandoned, it still exists on the property, along with some storage sheds. In fact, the city continues to tax this lot as not only a buildable lot, but it actually taxes the existing structures on the property, including the residential camp. The residential camp and storage sheds are in disrepair, as I'm sure you can see in some of the photos that we sent to you, and they are both located within the side setback in very close proximity to its abutting boundary line. The neighborhood itself is characterized by very small lots with closely located homes. I'm sure you're all familiar with this area. It's, we did give exhibits and maps so that you could see where it is, but there's, it's right across from the school. So it's a pretty populated area. It's very densely characterized with these properties and the homes that were built there. So as a result, a number of the properties that are already in existence already fail to meet either your size or your frontage requirements, or both, and some of them are significantly deficient in both of them and have their houses built within your setback requirements. For, just as an example, so properties located at 62 and 62 and 1/2 Stone Street, they only have 10 feet and 40 feet of frontage, respectively, and are .08 and .10 acres in size, and both of them have their houses built within your setbacks. So that's kind of what the neighborhood as it exists today looks like. Just a brief history of the property, when we reviewed the record, it looks like that at least as of 1966, this lot was owned in common with the 70 Stone Street, which is the abutting lot. Based on the City of Concord's assessors' records, it looked like at that point in time, both properties had an established principal use on them. So at that point in time, they couldn't be merged, because they both had, one had a residential structure, one had the camp. So they were both having principal uses existing on those lots. Now, I'm not sure at what point in time the residential camp ceased, like they ceased using that. So it's unclear to me at what point in time that use ended, and we couldn't find the records on that. But it's clear at some point in time, they both had their own principal uses on their lots. The applicant's now proposing to construct a single-family residence on the property. Even though this property does not meet the current standards for lot size and frontage, the applicant is able to use the buildable area on the lot to meet all of the other requirements within your zoning ordinance. Specifically, they're able to meet setback requirements, block coverage requirements, and they greatly exceed the requirement for your driveway separations from street intersections and existing driveways. So that really has to do with the lack of frontage, which is only three feet in this particular case, but even with that said, they can still meet those portions of your zoning ordinance. One of the things that I do want to make sure I make it clear, and this is really for purposes of understanding how this came about, and just to explain to you that the applicant didn't buy these properties just, you know, without doing some due diligence. So prior to purchasing the lots, the applicant went in and spoke to members within the City of Concord's Planning Department and the Building Department, and specifically asked if this lot was considered a grandfathered buildable lot. And in both instances, the department said, absolutely, of course, this is a buildable lot. So based on that information and the fact that it looked like both lots have uses already established on them, he really had no reason to think that the information that he obtained from the city was incorrect. So he went, of course, he went forward and purchased the two properties. It was only after he bought the two properties that he found out that he, in fact, does need a variance in order to, well, basically do anything on this lot because of the fact that it doesn't meet the zoning. So it's very clear that if these two lots had never been in common ownership, or if that residential camp had stayed in use, then he could use this lot by right. He would not need any zoning relief for it. It is solely the fact that they were once in common ownership and that use stopped that causes us to need this variance today. So I'm just going to try to be brief. I'm going to walk through the prongs of the variance, and at any point in time, if you have any questions, please just stop me. But unnecessary hardship. A, the zoning restriction as applied to the property interferes with the reasonable use of the property. Well, as I already stated, this is a very unique property in a unique situation. It's only due to the fact that these properties were in common ownership within a abutment lot that causes this to have to qualify for a variance. So under all other circumstances, this would be considered a grandfathered buildable lot within the city. The use that's being proposed will allow the applicant to not only utilize this property in a reasonable manner, but consistent with the neighborhood. Now, one of the strange but most unique circumstances of this property and the applicant's proposal is that if this is granted, the residential structure on this particular lot will be more conforming than the majority of the properties in this neighborhood. And I know that sounds odd, but the reason is this: it is an older, very well-established neighborhood, and it is densely developed. There are a large amount of lots within this neighborhood that fail to meet your size requirements and your frontage requirements, but the big difference is a majority of those houses are actually built within the setbacks, just because of the fact that they were, they're older houses, and they were built in, you know, obviously, under a different zoning. So most of them are very close to their neighbors, very close to their boundaries. So most of them are very close to their neighbors, very close to their boundaries. Now, the difference in this particular case is the applicant is able to construct a modest home just using the area that's allowed on the property as buildable and stay outside of all the setbacks. So he will be able to locate it in a proper place on the property that'll make it fit into this neighborhood. And given that, we do believe that the zoning restriction as applied to this particular property interferes with not only its reasonable use, but quite frankly, all use of the property. And this is where I just want to point out one more time for hardship, just to make the case that this is not like a self-imposed hardship, that the applicant did reasonably rely upon the information that he obtained from the City of Concord Planning and Building Departments prior to purchasing the property, that this property was considered a grandfathered buildable lot. In the event that this variance is not granted, the applicant will not be able to construct anything on the property because it fails to meet those requirements, and that truly is a hardship. B, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restrictions on the property. As I've already stated, the proposed use of the properties, it's in a residential neighborhood, so this particular use is permitted by right in this area. It will be in keeping with the uses that are already established on the abutting lots and the neighboring area. Given that many of your properties located in this area failed to meet the requirements under your zoning ordinance, there really is no fair justification to deny the applicant the ability to build on this one particular lot, when all of the other lots have been developed, quite frankly, and not many of them. I think there are a few of them that may actually meet the zoning requirements, but the vast majority of them do not. This is going to be constructed to fit into the neighborhood. It'll fit on the lot. It will not adversely impact the neighborhood or the surrounding properties, but instead, it's going to allow this property to be used in the same spirit as is expressed in your zoning ordinance, and once again, that's already established within the neighborhood. Therefore, we believe that there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general purposes of your zoning ordinance and the specific restrictions on this particular property. Two, granting the variance will be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Well, we think that this is consistent with your zoning ordinance. Once again, it is a use that's permitted by right, so clearly that fits. Even though it doesn't meet your lot size requirements, we are able to meet the setbacks as well as the lot coverage. So this is not going to exceed the lot coverage requirements, even though it's a smaller lot, and we will be able to meet all the setbacks. And the same can be said for frontage. So we're only three feet short of frontage, as I stated, but we still can vastly exceed your driveway separation and intersection separation requirements under your zoning ordinance. So that three feet of frontage doesn't impact the fact that we're going to have a driveway that conflicts with anybody else. And when I say greatly exceeds, I think we have somewhere around, over 100 feet between the two. So it's a very large separation. Even with this requested variance relief, the house that we're proposing will be consistent in design and location with your general neighborhood. There really is not going to be any noticeable difference to the area if you allow one more house to be built on that lot. There's no reasonable purpose to prohibit the applicant from constructing this. In fact, the RN District itself is specifically established to recognize substantially developed urban neighborhoods. And quite frankly, that's exactly what this is, and this proposal is in keeping with that purpose. Once again, if the property had not been in common ownership, we wouldn't even be here today. They would be permitted to put a house on that lot as long as they could satisfy all of your other zoning requirements, which he does. So as a result, we do not believe that this is contrary to the spirit and intent, specifically given the fact that your zoning ordinance has a grandfathered clause, which does allow lots of this nature to be built upon but for the common ownership, clearly we believe that that's within the spirit of your zoning ordinance. The authorization of a variance will not be contrary to the public interest. As you all know, to be contrary to the public interest, your variance must unduly in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. Now, you look at whether or not we alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood or it threatens your public health, safety, or welfare of the public. Now, clearly, this variance does neither of those. As I've stated, the use itself is permitted by right, and it's just going to be a residential structure. The fact that it was owned in common within a abutting lot is the sole characteristic which triggers this particular need for a variance. The use that's going to be on this lot is consistent with the general area, consistent with the characteristics of the neighborhood, and it certainly will not have any impact on the neighborhood nor create any safety hazards to the area. One of the other things that we looked at is, you know, there is currently a lack of housing available within the city, and we do understand this is solely one single-family home, but it is one more single-family home that could be provided on a lot that could support this within a well-established neighborhood that it wouldn't look out of character for. It's in close proximity to a school, the downtown, and we believe that this is an example of how this proposal would actually benefit the public interest. Authorization of a variance will result in substantial justice. Once again, you all know that the guiding rules in evaluating substantial justice is that any loss to the individual that's not outweighed by a gain to the general public is considered an injustice. Under this standard, we also believe that the applicant clearly meets this. If the city is to deny the applicant's request to construct a single-family residence on this property, it will result in a tremendous loss to the applicant without seeing any justified gain to the public in this case. In fact, given that the proposal will be in keeping with the existing uses in your neighborhood, the established uses on the surrounding properties, and the fact that it'll provide, you know, just one more single-family home that'll be on the market, something that's much needed within the city, we believe that this is creating a gain to the general public, certainly not resulting in any kind of loss to the general public. Substantial justice is also achieved when you grant variances that don't adversely impact on nearby property owners and which allow a property to be used reasonably. For all the reasons that I stated, the fact that we can keep this outside of the setbacks so we won't be encroaching on our neighbors and will be able to use this lot in a way that's consistent with the neighborhood, we do believe that we also meet that. And then finally, authorization of a variance will not diminish the value of surrounding property. Well, once again, it's a permitted use. It's going to be a single-family residence. This is not something that's going to take down the values of the properties in this neighborhood. The applicant's making a concerted effort to make sure that it's going to fit in with the character of the neighborhood, so it'll be a modest home because it'll be built within the confines of what your setbacks allow. One of the other things I will obviously be doing is taking down the residential camp and the sheds. Those significantly encroach on that side setback near one of their abutters. So we will be able to clean that up. So from our point of view, we believe that this will actually result in an increase in value to the area, not just the property, but it will increase the value to the area to get rid of those, you know, dilapidated structures and to put a nice new home on it. So we do not believe that there is going to be any diminution of the value of the properties in the area. And then I believe that we have at least one of our abutters are here tonight, but just for the record, the applicant did approach both of the abutters because technically we only have two. The other one is like the park for the Concord. And neither expressed concerns at that point in time to him about this proposal. One of his neighbors did ask to see some plans for the house, but I'll be frank, he doesn't quite have those yet. He wanted to get through zoning first, but I'm sure he'll be willing to, you know, work with his neighbor to show him what it is that he's looking to put on the property. So if you have any questions?
Questions from the board?
Yes. So I see the site plan here, which is obviously, I understand, you know, preliminary.
Yes.
Because you're waiting to see what...
Yes.
But given that it's preliminary, how confident are you that that structure is going to be able to fit in there? Or once you start construction, is it possible that, you know, there may be modifications? And then like, what size of the house are you figuring?
So I'll let Jack answer that since he is in construction.
The house is drawn as a 24 by 36 colonial. As long as it fits within setbacks, won't change. If I know it's going to fit, then we'll go with that plan.
24 by 36. Okay. Sorry, I didn't quite get it. You said you don't expect it to change?
No.
The footprint?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal?
I would.
Oh.
Please. You sure? I didn't know Mr. Reardon was here tonight. I'm here for the next case, 33 Old Allen Road, but I've been painting houses for John and his father.
May I swear you in?
Sure.
I swear to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
Please have a seat. Identify yourself with the record.
Brian Vassillion.
Brian?
Vassillion. I've been painting houses for John and his father. I had no idea they were here tonight. For the last 25 years, and if this goes through, then it's going to put me to work and other contractors in the house. That's what I really need right now.
That's all we need to know.
Thank you.
There was someone else who wanted to be heard?
I do.
Yes.
Hello? I'm Paul Halverson. Oh, yes. Yes, I do.
Swear to tell the truth.
I'm Paul Halverson. I'm the abutter immediately to the north. And Mr. Reardon and I spoke by phone. He explained his plan, his counsel, touched on many of the items that I was going to touch on, to be quite honest about it. It's not out of character for the neighborhood. I don't see any issue with him having a variance for this purpose. I believe electric comes in off of Bow Street, water off of Bow Street. I think sewer may be also off of Bow, so I'm in favor of it. His counsel was spot-on on the character of the neighborhood. Bow Street leads into Stone Street, immediately past this lot, and Stone Street is quite a tight street involving houses. Most of those houses in the south end were at one time cottages, as how they're referred to. And if you look at the plan, I think one of the original plans goes back to 1898 for some of those divided parcels. So I'm in favor of it. I look forward to having the new structure next to the house. I think it's in character with the neighborhood, and I think you ought to approve it.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Nice to see you. Yeah, good one.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but. May we have your name, please?
Todd Anderson. So I'm not a direct abutter. I live on 62 and 1/2 Stone Street, one of the properties that was called out for having very small frontage and have faced similar challenges in doing some of my own additions. So I understand some of the setback challenges and resident for about 20 years, and the lot has been vacant. The properties have been, excuse me, the building that's on there has been vacant, and it's dilapidated, and absolutely think this would be great, a great growth opportunity for that area. So for what it's worth, if it sways any member here, I support it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Someone? Did I see a hand? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Laura Cassidy.
What would you like us to know?
I have some, everything I'm going to say is in here, and I have some photographs too. I'll pass them out. It's just an overview of what I will speak to today. So I want to thank you all for allowing me the time to speak today. I really appreciate it. Again, my name is Laura Cassidy, and I live at 70 Stone Street, which abuts the proposed new construction on both the rear and south-facing sides.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to request actually a modification to the proposed site plan should the variant request be approved to allow the single-family dwelling to be built on a lot size of 5,924 plus or minus square feet where 10,000 square feet is required. Just some quick background information. I purchased the property recently, back in March 24th, from Mr. Reardon, and he did an exceptional job on the rehab of my house prior to the purchase. And I'm confident that he'll build a high-quality, single-family home that will fit well within the wonderful neighborhood that I can now call home. I was aware prior to the sale that a portion of the land would be subdivided. However, I was really surprised to find that the lot size is over 40% smaller than required for this neighborhood. And as a result, I was not aware that the house would be built a mere 10 feet from my property line on the side and 25 feet from the rear. I have had an opportunity to review the proposed site plan, and I have four requests should this variant be approved. First, I'm happy to see that the garage and driveway are on the north side of the lot, and I would like assurance that this is carried out on the final plan. Second, considering the extraordinarily small lot size, I request that the home be fixed at one-story high. Third, because the land is newly subdivided, I have not been able to locate property line markers, and I would like to have the property line officially marked prior to construction. And if you take a look at the pictures that I just have on page three and four, just a couple of pictures on page three, it's taken from the front side of my home. You can see my home on the right, and it's looking over Mr. Reardon's property. And the close-up view on that second picture is showing the property that extends, and there's really no delineation between the two yards. On page four, you'll see two more photographs just taken from another angle, one from my deck that you can see is very close to this property, as well as one from my backyard looking over into Mr. Reardon's backyard. And again, there's really no distinction between the two yards. So my fourth request is due to the tight property lines and the fact that I share two sides of my yard with Mr. Reardon's. I have safety concerns with regards to living so close to a construction site. For example, nails, splintered wood, trash, as well as airborne debris coming into my yard as well as covering my deck. I also believe that there's potential for construction vehicles driving on my property and causing damage because the yards are not clearly defined. Mr. Reardon's company does have a history of parking and driving off pavement during construction, as you can see in the first photograph that I have on page three, as I'm now repairing some of the damage from some of the tracks that were laid down on my property before I purchased it. It's also worth noting that because of the small lot size, I do also have strong concerns about encroachment, either intentional or otherwise, by folks who will purchase the home after it's been built. So in consideration of my concerns above, I'm respectively requesting that a permanent eight-foot vinyl privacy fence be installed around the full perimeter of our two shared property lines, and that the installation takes place prior to any demolition or construction activities. So a quick review of my request. First is maintain the site plan with the driveway and garage on the north side of the lot. I'm requesting that the home be built as a range, just one story. Three, the installation of property line markers by our certified surveyor. And then, of course, immediate installation of an eight-foot permanent privacy fence. I don't believe that any of these requests are unreasonable, and given the significant variance that Mr. Reardon is requesting, I'm simply seeking to reduce the undue hardship imposed upon me in the upcoming summer months and beyond, while also trying to be accommodating as I can as a good neighbor. And I thank you all for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there any questions?
Does not look like it.
Okay.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in opposition? Any comments on code enforcement?
One of the requests will actually violate the ordinance.
The fence? Yeah.
Oh, it's six feet?
No, you can't have a fence in the front yard that's over four feet high.
Yeah.
Oh, she wanted all...
Right, it goes right to the street, so you couldn't put a fence in the front yard of Bow Street.
Right.
Ms. Dolder, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to what you've heard?
So the first thing that I do want to clarify is this lot has not been newly subdivided. This was a pre-existing lot of record. So when the title search was done for 70 Stone, they should have been able to find out what that property was, and they would have understood that this lot was not part of it, because this is not a new subdivision. This is a pre-existing lot of record. It's its own lot. And I think Ms. Cassidy did mention that Mr. Reardon was very frank with her when he sold her the lot, that this was his intention for the abutting lot. So this is something that he was very clear that he was intending on building a house on this lot. In terms of some of the, like, limiting it to one story, I mean, that's not generally something that the zoning board does. The zoning board is only approving the use per se, allowing us to use this for a residential structure. The zoning board doesn't get into the design of it and whether or not how high it can be, as long as we meet your height requirements, which it will. So beyond that, that's not something in the purview of this board. I think Tracy already mentioned some of those requests actually violate your zoning ordinance, so they wouldn't be able to be... so they wouldn't be able to be done. I think, I'll speak for Jack, and he can obviously clarify, but I do think that he's going to have, like, it surveyed or at least mark all of the boundaries before he starts. Anyway, he's going to need to know where his boundaries are, where the setbacks are, because he needs to stay out of setbacks. So that will be done prior to construction, just like on any other job. Past that, I think everything, all the other comments were things that are outside the purview of this board and/or may violate other portions of the zoning ordinance.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
That will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a variance to allow a house to be built on a lot which is, was at one time owned by the same party that owned the lot next door, which meant that it sacrificed its automatic qualification for, to be a buildable lot. We hear testimony that without a variance, nothing could be built on this lot that the zoning ordinance permits as an individual lot. Discussion, starting with you, Ted.
Well, I think there are some unique characteristics going on here that could justify this variance pretty easily. All the parameters have been met.
Very good. Nick?
When you look at Stone Street, you can see that most of the houses, at least at the end of Stone Street, have got substantially less frontage than what the applicant is putting in for, in terms of square footage. Granted, it doesn't meet the 10,000 requirement, but there's several properties already in the neighborhood that don't meet the footage requirement. So I think it's in conformity with the character of the neighborhood, and the request is reasonable.
Laura?
So I understand and sympathize with the abutter's concerns, but I agree that the conditions she's requesting are not something this board has the jurisdiction to impose. And I think this variance is justified. There's a uniqueness here because the properties were held in common ownership, and because this property was used as a residential property in the past. And more importantly, without a variance, the lot can't be used at all, and that would constitute a taking. It is not contrary to the public interest or the spirit of the ordinance, because it is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and all of the other zoning requirements will be met. I think substantial justice, when you weigh the loss to the individual versus the gain to the public, the loss to the individual here is huge, and I don't see the gain to the public. In fact, I agree with Attorney Dolder that there's a gain to the public from granting the variance and allowing the dilapidated structure to be reconstructed in conformance with the setbacks. And I have seen no evidence that granting this variance would diminish surrounding property values, particularly in this densely populated neighborhood.
Nick?
Yeah, I agree with what everyone said. What I think is really critical is, like Laura just said, that they, without a variance, they have no functional use of the property. I know there's several issues of precedent with that. And I also listened carefully to the neighbors' concerns, and they're all valid concerns, but I think beyond what we can really address, the applicant seems very confident that they can build this, meeting the setbacks and all other areas of the code, which is pretty amazing, actually. And as far as any construction debris or noise, obviously, the abutters have the right to enforce any trespass laws or noise ordinances along those lines to make sure that the construction doesn't unreasonably interfere with her use of her property. So I agree with everyone else.
Just a quick tidbit of math. The actual square footage of the house is really only 20% to 25% of the actual square footage of the lot, so you should easily be able to fit that in the square footage of the land.
If they can't, they'll need to come back for further variance.
Right.
Right. Very good. I agree with my colleagues. There was no point made that I don't concur with. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Based on the findings of fact we've all expressed, I move that we grant the variance for construction of a single-family home on a non-conforming lot as to frontage and size.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted. You're welcome. That brings us to the next case this evening, which is case 0043, 2023, 33 Old Loudoun Road, RM Medium Density Residential District, 33 Old Loudoun Road LLC owner. The owners wish to construct a multifamily development and seek variances to Article 2841H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow a building height of 41.5 feet, where a maximum of 35 feet is allowed, and Article 2845D3, Building Dimensions and Separations, to allow a building length of 343.5 feet, where a maximum of 160 feet is allowed. Ladies and gentlemen, may I swear you in? Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, sir.
Will you identify yourselves for the record as you testify?
Jim Palmisano, owner of the land.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Vest. I'm an attorney at Soloway &amp; Hollis here in Concord, and I represent the applicant in this proposal. And before I dive into kind of the details of the project, which is, I think, a very exciting project and pretty important for the community, I did want to just go through the list of who we have here with us, so that if you have any questions about various aspects of it, we've got all the answers here for you. With respect to the project architect, Jason LaCombe is here. A traffic analyst, Scott Thornton, is here. Engineer Matt Peterson is here. And then, representing the ownership and the ownership team, is Jim Palmisano, Lisa Venditti. We don't have Nick Palmisano, but he's part of the team, and Karen Lemire Spencer in the back. And so whatever questions you have about this project, we should have the answers here in the room for you. As I mentioned, this is a really exciting project. It's really a fantastic opportunity to enhance this housing stock for senior individuals over 55 years old in Concord. The property is located at 33 Old Loudoun Road. I don't want to take too much of the thunder away from my colleagues, because I want them to talk about the project itself, because the project and what it's for and what it's about is an important part of the criteria for the variances. But it is a very unique and exciting approach to senior housing that I think you'll find different and important, and a real, great enhancement to the community that helps to increase the value of the abutting properties and provide this important housing stock. With that in mind, I want to be mindful of what you want to hear about. And although I want to talk about the project, and we'll certainly do that, and then we'll get into the criteria for the variance, I want to focus where you want us to focus on that. We've certainly given you a lot of written material as well, which supports the things that we want to present. And so is there a sense of the board, how much time you want us to spend on background and details and?
I would minimize background and go straight to the criteria. We have had a chance to read your submission, so all the board are familiar with the details of the background.
Okay.
Let's talk about the criteria for a variance. Those are the things we actually have the authority to say something about.
Excellent. I do want to, I don't want to skip completely over the background, because, like I said, I think it's important to understanding why we're asking for variances in this, but I will go as fast as we can. Is that okay?
Sure. Aliho. You're up.
My name is Lisa Venditti. I have been the vice president of property management for CPM for 21 years. It's my job to oversee the properties in our portfolio and run them. I'm the first and closest to the residents that we have and understand the details of the building. Put together a quick PowerPoint presentation. I will go through it as fast as I can, just to give you some background. I'm assuming you don't?
It's this one?
No.
Here you go.
Thank you.
I moved you ahead one.
Just a quick bit about CPM. We've been in business since 1970. We're privately held, and unlike a lot of developers, we keep what we build and become a part of it. We've planned and developed more than 2,000 multifamily homes. We've also managed 175,000 square feet of commercial space, but we specialized in 55 and over housing for the last 25 years. What is a 55 apartment community? Legally, it's just simply a building with one amenity that caters to somebody 55 and over. 80% of the residents have to be 55 and over, and we have to have an age verification reporting system. That's not what we're talking about building. We see the village at Capital Crossing to be so much more than an apartment community. We make the amenity rich. We create homes for people to live in for years to come. We have resident lounges in each building, fitness centers and outdoor amenities, game rooms, heated garages, libraries, craft rooms, and game table rooms. What will we include at this property? We're talking about three buildings. Each building has its own set of amenities, and that's very important for the residents. We're going to have resident lounges and outdoor patios for socializing. We're going to have fitness and outdoor activities, including a couple of pickleball courts. We're going to have a pub-style game room with billiards and table board game rooms, heated garages in each building, library for book clubs, a craft room, elevator service. They're going to be 100% non-smoking. They will be pet-friendly. There'll be a walking route throughout the property, and there'll be onsite management and 24/7 maintenance. The apartments themselves are very upscale, and they're spacious. They're not a tiny, little, typical senior apartment. They're full-size homes. Hardwood cabinets, solid countertops, stainless appliances, open-concept floor plans, spacious room slots, closets, multiple baths in every floor plan, full-size in-suite washer and dryer, individual climate control, private patios. This is our typical one-bedroom, 950 square feet, larger than a lot of two-bedrooms. Our two-bedroom apartments tend to be 1,140 square feet. Why are these features so important? That's really what I wanted to spend some time talking to you about. They create a community for residents to become involved. One of the biggest problems with senior housing sometimes is people become isolated. They get boxed into their apartments. We include a disproportionately large number of amenity space to encourage people to come down and socialize. This is especially true in a typical New England winter. We have found that the residents are more likely to take advantage of community activities when these are right in their own building. So each building gets this breadth of amenities. And 48-unit buildings such as those proposed are the ideal size. It's small enough where they feel part of a community, but large enough. These create a home for the 55 and over residents. They can keep their furnishings and belongings. They're large enough to entertain, have family functions in. We offer full-service maintenance and onsite management. It allows them to age in place. Most of our residents will remain here and live independently. The combination is proven to create a stable community with the turnover, very little turnover and very little transitory residence. So why do we want to build this in Concord? Is the next question. Well, 1/3 of Concord, New Hampshire residents are 55 and over. 25% are in the 45 to 54 age group. Concord has a dynamic and attractive community for this age group, with economic indicators that are very favorable for this type of housing. Our typical resident profile, it's 100% market rate. We're going to have 100% of our residents be 55 and over, not 80%. We average 1.5 residents per household. Incomes generally exceed local markets, and the average stay in our communities is 12 years, with many of our residents over 20 years. So why 33 Old Loudoun Road? Well, the proposed 55 community is going to provide an excellent transitory from the retail segment on Loudoun Road to the residential neighborhood behind it. It's a great transition property. The residents will bring spending power to the area, and most trips out of the building will be off-peak. The majority of residents will come from a 7.5-mile radius, bringing up existing homes for new domestic households. These luxury apartments will add to Concord's tax base without placing a burden on the school system. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you.
And again, I'm sorry I rushed through that, but I was trying to get through that for time for you guys.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. The reason why I didn't want to skip over that stuff and why I wanted it to be a part of the presentation is to focus on some of the concepts of community and bringing seniors together, where they can interact with each other, and the importance of doing that. And the reason why that's so important to the proposal is that the two things that we're asking for relief from relate to the size of the building. A variance from the height requirement for a 41 and 1/2-foot height, where 35 feet is permitted, and a variance for the length for 343 feet, where 160 feet are permitted. And what that allows you to do when you have that extra length and extra height is have a three-story building with about 48 apartments in the total building. And I think you heard from Lisa that the community size is very, very important. If you had smaller buildings, you would have a smaller community. You wouldn't be able to provide the number of amenities, and you wouldn't have the number of people that can come together to make friends and really avoid that social isolation. This is sort of the new era of senior housing, a different way to do it. And so that community is absolutely critical to doing this. In addition, because this property is, the size and shape that it is, with wetlands and topography and some other things that you'd have to navigate, if you're trying to develop 144 units in here, which is about the density that's permitted, you, in smaller buildings, and then separate them as required by the ordinance and provide all the parking and all of that kind of thing, there's just no way to get that level of, the number of units that you're talking about on a property like this in smaller buildings, because of the distances you'd have to put between the buildings. And more than anything else, you'd really lose that community that you're really trying to build with effective and excellent senior housing. That's what makes it a really exciting project. I think that I included in the criteria, when we talked about the value of properties, I've already said once, I think this will increase the value of surrounding properties. The master plan for Concord talks about recruiting or trying to attract effective, high-quality senior housing. The exact quote from the master plans included in the written materials that you have, but it's, the reason why those things are sought after deals with the town's tax base, the city's tax base, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to call you a town, the city's tax base, because these are really high-value, high-quality, very beautiful buildings. They're also important in this location, because as you'll see on the map, it's the first property on a part of its medium-density residential zone, as it abuts a whole lot of commercial from Steeplegate Mall and all of the big buildings that are there. In that zone, 45 feet is permitted, whereas 35 in the medium-density housing. So if it was the next lot over, you could have the height that you needed, and many of those buildings do. In fact, I think that there's a senior housing apartment approved not that long ago in the other side of the zone with a height higher than ours, but within what permitted in that zone at 45. And almost all of the buildings that you see around there, from Dick's Sporting Goods and several of the others, have longer building facades than the 160 feet permitted, whether those are achieved by variance, or, because Steeplegate Mall certainly has hundreds of feet long, much longer than this. Some of them may be grandfathered, some of them may be by variance, some of them may be what's allowed in that zone. But the point of all of that is that this property and the larger buildings really make a great transition between the backside of a bunch of commercial buildings that are larger and taller to individual lots on residential homes, which may be the next thing over. Some very nice, very attractive residential buildings that can be built there. The transition nature of it on this property, I think, is really important to consider. I'm sort of attacking a couple of the variance criteria out of order, and I'll sort of go back and make sure we checklist all the others, but to the extent more is needed, feel free to ask, and also relying on what's submitted in the written materials, which is a little bit more voluminous. But in terms of it being a hardship, or that there's special circumstances on the property, the size, shape of the property, the presence of wetlands, the existence of slopes require you to only use a portion of the property for development, and doing that in three buildings will allow you to get the density that is available on the property. You couldn't do it in any other way. It would It would definitely be a hardship if you were limited to a two-story building or if the buildings were only half as long where you had clusters of, you know, 24 or 16 apartments rather than 48. Smaller community just wouldn't bring the folks together and, and provide the level of amenities that are available. It probably would be a project that just wouldn't go forward in that, in that regard. So that touches on both the special circumstances, the literal application of the provisions. I think that our engineers and designers as to the height variance did their best to minimize the height. There's a garage underneath the buildings and they're semi-subsurface, but putting them any further subsurface would create drainage problems and water management runoff problems for the building. So there really isn't a way to have a three-story building that, that meets the standard. And a two-story building, like I said, would be much smaller. With respect to the lengths of the buildings, one of the interesting parts about this, the spirit of the ordinance, when it deals with height and length, are dealing with a couple of things. Either it's the visual impact of the building or whether your fire and safety equipment can get around it and deal with it. The fire and safety equipment in Concord really isn't an issue because you've got taller buildings all over the place in just about every zone, including downtown, than the 41 feet. The visual impact of it, because the buildings have central stairs and elevators plus stairs on both ends, the, you know, fire departments that would enter there are not going any further down a hallway than they would if this was two, you know, shorter buildings sitting next to each other. So all of that's taken care of. The buildings are sort of on a larger site, not particularly close to other things where the, the length or the height is particularly apparent from a visual aspect. And so the, the idea that the spirit of the ordinance is to maintain attractive development and not be overbearing on the site is certainly achieved here because of the way the site's configured with the building sort of standing back away from it. I want to make sure I'm not missing anything, but I also don't want to beat a dead horse if we've provided you with enough written material for all of that. Give me a second just to take a quick peek. But I think that probably covers all of the criteria, at least in some way, and again, augmented by the written material that you already have before you. One of the things that I think is always an interesting part of the impact on neighbors or the diminution of value of public properties is concerns about traffic. And that's why we have a traffic study that we included with variance application. It's a little unusual to do that at this stage. That's usually a planning board concept, but it's included in the materials that you have with the number of trips where there's really not any significant degradation in the level of service for any of the nearby intersections or roadways. That's because of that. So I think that covers, is there anything, Jim, that you want to add or Lisa?
So quickly, this project works. The property works. We've done it with the neighborhoods and the commercial mix. We've done it just in residential neighborhoods where it fit in nicely because all of the elevations, they're not like straight-faced military buildings. They're, they have ins and outs with the porches. They have a lot of roof design. And I, I really can't speak anymore other than the fact that it works. It's worked in multiple towns in Massachusetts, Haverhill. We just built two of them in Merrimack, Mass. in a highly residential area that is similar to the zoning that we have here. We've done multiple buildings in Manchester, New Hampshire, right-abutting residential homes. The traffic is minimal because of the age. And I just, I'm not trying, trying to tell myself in any way. I just know the other side of the table. I don't want to see this. I don't want to see this big, high building. I don't want to see this monstrous length. And I understand that. And I'm just telling you, it has worked in other neighborhoods exactly like this. So it, it is not, and it's always met the five criteria for any variances that we needed, the height or length.
I think the pictures that you have in the package and the ones that were shown here are from a similar development that this developer's done and owns in a different, in Merrimack, Mass. And the visuals are intended to represent pretty much what this one would look like. Obviously, there's always little differences to fit into the unique property, but that's where the photographs come from. Those are actual developments that are open. One other part of this that I wanted to mention is the demand for senior housing. I believe the last development that you guys opened was 98% booked on opening day?
Yes.
Is that right? 98% booked, that's, that's astronomical. I had an applicant before me, I said on my own planning board, I had an applicant before us last night talking about how theirs was 50% booked on opening day and they were thrilled with that. And it was, 50 is a great number. 98 is out of this world in terms of the demand for it and, and how many people are looking out for this kind of development. With that in mind, I'll leave it to you to bring us questions if you have any or...
I have a question.
Shut up and get out of the way.
If we could go back to the calculation of the number of units that are permitted on the property and as opposed to the size of the property, the buildable area of the property, in the very earliest part of your presentation, you made a remark about how a certain number of units could be built there but wouldn't fit within the envelope that's permitted. Could you explain that again, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's worth a little bit deeper dive as well because the math that's outlined in the narrative that we sent has a little bit more of a yield for the property than I think we see with closer scrutiny. But the yield for the property is about 145, 245 units. I'm sorry, I'm not doing any math, 145. We have 144 units. If you take these buildings, is there one that's got sort of the site plan overhead of the site?
And how's the yield calculated?
Right. The yield's calculated by a certain number of units per acre. I think in the ordinance, it's, I forget whether, what, how many you're permitted per acre, but it's probably about...
This says 14.
14.
Yep.
And that's per buildable acre?
Per buildable acre. Yeah, and that's, that's the calculation that we came up with.
Okay.
And so trying to get 144, 145 on this site, if you took any of the three buildings and you, instead of making them this size, you did two buildings that were a bit smaller and you have to space the buildings apart from each other, I think the regulation requires them to be...
40 feet?
40 feet apart. And you start to spread that out and figure out where the slopes are and where the wetlands are and things like that. The puzzle's just not solvable anymore if they were trying to be six buildings with 144 units instead of three buildings with 144 units. That was the point I was trying to make. I'm sorry if I was clumsy in making it.
So to paraphrase what you said, the ordinance permits you 145 units and given the configuration of the lot, the only way you can get 145 units on there is with a larger building than is permitted and a taller building than is permitted.
True.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Convince me on that a little more because you've got, I mean, the calculation is based on the buildable footprint, which is, I mean, 11 and a half acres is a lot of footprint. So why can't you use your buildable footprint to just, you know, do two floors and fewer buildings farther apart? Is it just because your concept is closer to the community, so you want fewer buildings and closer together so you can kind of have the fitness room and everything close to people? Or is it something about the construction and the site that makes that not possible?
Both of those are correct. The priority in building this, the quality senior housing is to have the communities in the larger buildings because it's got 48 families essentially that are going to commune with each other. But, and maybe Matt can help me with understanding the lot and what would happen if you tried to break it up. He's the engineer for the project.
Sure. Tell the truth.
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Matt Peterson with Keats, Northam Associates. One of the things I've been involved with, most people know it, I've been involved with the, all the development with the Damontes on the front there. So I've got a pretty good understanding of this area and some of the butters and neighbors. And actually, one of the butters is my dental hygienist down in Bedford that I get to go see every six months as I talk about this project here. We have, the total area is 16 acres, which allows 16 times 14, which would come out to about 225, somewhere in there, units. I really don't believe that putting the units off Portsmouth Street makes a lot of sense. I think it makes a lot more sense having the units off of Old Loudoun Road. So on this parcel here, you have that major wetland that splits the property. So to get the density on this property, we would have to put half the development on the Portsmouth side and access Portsmouth Street and then the other half of the units accessing Old Loudoun Road here if we split the buildings. So by allowing us a bigger building in length, it allows us to keep away from putting any of the units over on the other side. And you'll notice in the plan, I actually showed a two-acre residential, single-family lot over there. So we envisioned putting a single-family house on the other side there on the wetland. I think that's more conducive to the Portsmouth Street area. So that's why we looked at the length and the height of the buildings to put them on this side here with it. We definitely can get the density on there by using all of the upland that we have. I just don't think it fits into the surrounding area as well as it does in this location here. And then as far as they talked about the community areas and the size, it was more so to have the ability, this is, I've been doing this 27 years. I think this is probably the first three buildings that all have a facilities inside each one. Yes, we do have a standard clubhouse for a pool, but each one of these buildings is kind of operating as its own community. So what I was told when we started laying this out and looking at concepts is that, you know, Matt, number one, I really need the garage. Okay, I know, we live in New England, that makes a lot of sense, but I got to deal with AOT and I got to deal with drainage issues. And once I start going down the ground, I can't treat that last little area there that goes into the garages there. So we had to balance between how low I could go into the garage and still get the drainage to come out to a drainage system and then how I could grade the land around to bring it up and then make the units work for them. So it's, actually, we've gone through and done a lot of design work on this at the beginning stages to find out if we could do it before we got here where most people haven't even looked at the drainage or traffic as of product and stuff like that. So again, this was, tried to locate it. I know back in the day I was involved, they were trying to put a coals on this property in this location. So to me, this made sense to put the residents here and not on Portsmouth Street. I think from a transitional standpoint, going from the commercial to the residential on Portsmouth, this is a nice break. And if the piece on the opposite side of the wetlands is more residential, I thought that made a lot of play. So that's how the density got to this side of the property and not putting it on the other side as well. Does that answer your question, sir?
It's helpful. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I may just add one more.
Yep.
Short item. Mean old developer, right? In Merrimack, Mass., we had 32 acres to use. We gave three acres to the police department because they didn't have a location. We built an office and a store up front where the residential Route 110, if anybody's familiar with the area, they had concerns about being close. We pushed both buildings all the way back. We had the ability to build over 200 units. We built 96. Not trying to sell myself. We took three years to buy this piece of land because I was looking at it, of course you look at it to make money, but I was looking at it to what works without disturbing green space, without making it look like, again, a downtown Boston area that doesn't fit here. So we spent, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he happens to be a client of my brother-in-law, who's a dentist. And it works. And I, I spent the time and energy with, with Matt, making sure that it worked, not so much to put 200 units here and make as much money as possible on rent. I wanted to make it so it was a community that worked in the area with the residential behind on Portsmouth Street and the commercial on the front.
And then let me just add one last thing, just so the board members understand. I know the city of Concord, we've been dealing with a lot of homeless campments throughout the last few years here. This is a full-on homeless camp with a toilet in the middle of the area that I'm putting these four buildings and talking to people. This campment moves from this location here down the power lines to another site in Pembroke, just down near the liquor store. So like I said, this area where we put it seemed to be, when we were out there, my wetland scientist actually came back to the office and we had to send somebody out with her because she was scared of the tents. So again, we really did try to work hard to fit this into the community with working with the owner and that. So that's it. Thank you.
Other questions for the board? Yes?
So the upland area that fronts on Portsmouth Street, how big is that? About three acres?
The lot was 2.14 and there's probably, yeah, about three acres, I would say, yep. Plus and minus.
And that lot, that lot you're showing doesn't exist, right?
Correct.
That proposal.
Yep. Yeah, so you have three times 14 over there.
And is that outside of the wetlands?
Yes, it is.
Other questions for the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but.
Yes, I do.
May we have your name, please?
Carl Sargent. And I live at the end of Portsmouth Street and I, my property is between Portsmouth and Old Loudoun Road. The size of these buildings have a big impact. You look at all the houses along Old Loudoun Road on the north side and all of, they're all single residents. Now, the thing is, what is the impact, visual impact? And I see they are, on the plan that I've got, they plan to keep some forest area along Old Loudoun Road, but there's a big gap where the Johnson house was that we're going to see right, boom, we're going to see one of those big buildings. And one of the things I'd like to see is a restriction that they would have to plant that, similar to what's along Dix and Petsmar. They put in upright pines and now we, you know, we get little glimpses of it, but we didn't see the whole impact of the stores because I, I looked right at those when they were building them and that. So that would be one of the things that I'm concerned about. And also, at their entrance into it, they should have some greenery there that would, so you wouldn't look in particularly into this whole development and that to downplay its influence on basically a neighborhood residential area in there. I'm glad to see, I didn't realize it was for senior citizens. I'm glad that that's being considered. And the, the one thing around the marsh and wetlands, the beavers get in there once in a while and we'd have a lot more trees in there now if the beavers hadn't taken them out, but they wouldn't take pines out. And so that's the thing, they have to put a conifer-type vegetation in, which would be evergreen. And I think it would help, you know, it would not, we wouldn't have the impact that we would have with that quite open and looking at those huge buildings because that is a big building that we would be seeing. We only see one of them in there. And that's my major concern that hopefully they can do something to, you know, do that. There's one other little thing, it's a safety concern. They show the sidewalk going crossing Old Loudoun Road. That's a dangerous corner. They don't want to put that there. They want it, the sidewalk to go down to the intersection where Old Loudoun Road goes into Loudoun Road. That's a very dangerous corner.
Could you tell, tell us where your, your house is relative to the site?
It's right...
You can go up and point to the map if that's helpful.
My house is, let me see. This is Old Loudoun Road. My house is this, this right in here.
Oh, right in the V.
So, so the thing is, see now, I looked right, when they were building these, I looked at all of these and the parking lot and everything. When they put these trees in, and they've really done a very good job. Now I get glimpses of them, but I don't see the whole impact. And if you come back here and you look at Johnson's property right in here, let me see the wetlands. Wetlands are right here. And the Johnson property, I guess, goes right here, I think. And, and, but the thing is, now you're going to look and there's got to be a big building right here. And that would, if they could break that up with, and then if they cull some of this pine grove along Old Loudoun Road, at least the trunks would break it up and the height wouldn't be seen because of the vegetation would make them look as if they were not as high as they were. So that's my major concern.
Thank you.
As a neighbor.
If they met those concerns, would you object to the project?
No, I know the city needs housing, but if it's senior citizen, that's one thing, you know, I think, I didn't know that until tonight. I hadn't heard that.
Yep.
So that would be, but, but that's where, we've had a big impact in our neighborhoods that keep eating away at us. And I've been in that neighborhood since 1954. And I've been in that neighborhood since 1954.
Maybe they should hire you as a consultant.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? Please come forward.
Frank Asseline?
And you're still sworn in?
I am but.
But think of all the work you'll get.
Why is it so blurred? It's bad enough without my glasses. Um, I believe this to be the, the pond right here.
Yep.
Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
My house is right here, I am but. Kyle's over here, I'm right here, right next to it. And Kyle's concerns are my concerns of looking across, I mean, it's a beautiful property. I mean, I love it there, besides the traffic. And the, uh, pine trees are but this whole property. And it's just gorgeous up there. Uh, deer, fox, um, occasional possum, occasional skunk. But, um, my concerns are leaving the vegetation around the areas. I'm not sure how, what the variances are, what they can take down and what they can't. But they need to leave those pine trees around there so that we don't have to look at these monstrosities. And the vegetation, as far as, uh, the runoff from these places that they're gonna build here and there and it can't go down into the, into the, uh, into the pond area down there. You know, it does dry up in the summertime until the beavers come in sometime and build it back up. But there's always water running through there. Um, like I said, there's a lot going on over there and this construction is just gonna, just, I can say it's gonna ruin the neighborhood, but, you know, progress is progress. You know, gotta do what you gotta do. But like I said, they gotta just put trees of vegetation, like Kyle said, the ones that are across the street from the house. So I look right at Dix also and the trees are great. Except that the sun comes up in the morning and it doesn't melt the snow on the street anymore and they gotta salt it up so that you wreck your car. But other than that, the trees are great, you know? Um, anyway, I guess those are my concerns, the, the runoff going into the pond and, and just a little bit of tranquility. Well, I'm still there. I'm putting my property up for sale too, so.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
And may we have your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Roy Schweiker and I'm not in a butter. I'm, you know, more concerned about, you know, we have zoning regulations for a reason. And I'm not quite sure why you're limiting a building to 160 feet. But my feeling is, if there's some reason for limiting it to 160 feet, then allowing a building more than double that size, you know, clearly there's some problem with that. On the other hand, if there's not a problem with having it 343, five feet, why don't we have a zoning ordinance that allows us, you folks don't have to show up and, you know, vote on it? So I would hope that, uh, as part of the discussion on this, someone would explain where that number comes from and why it is that, uh, it needs to exist. If what he's saying is correct, you know, why shouldn't every senior community have these tall, long buildings? Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions from Mr. Schweiker? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, sir. Um, could I go there for a quick start?
Sure. Could we get your name, please?
Oh, um, um, my name's Russ Perkins, I live at, uh, 299 Portsmouth Street.
Russ Perkins?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and that is, right here. So I live, I live right here. Um, and as you folks probably know, all of these buildings are single-family residences. Um, small houses. Uh, the commercial buildings over here, like Dix and Petsmar and so on, are commercial buildings, but they're not real tall, one-story. Nobody's there after hours or a weekend, well, nobody's there at night, so it's quiet. So we have a relatively quiet commercial zone here, residential families here. I, I hear this word transition a lot, I don't understand how putting a conglomeration of three-story, 41-foot-high, 343-foot-long buildings is a transition between small commercial buildings and residential houses. Um, it seems to me a transition should be, one from high to low or from expensive to cheap, but, but this is different in every way, size, height, and, uh, hours it's gonna be used and so on. So I don't, I don't consider this a nice transition. Uh, I consider the pine trees that are there would be a better transition from the commercial that's already there to my residence. So I hope, I hope what I have here makes some sense and comes out okay. But I, I just finished typing this, that's why I was late getting here tonight. Uh, I'll leave, will I leave this with you?
Sure, absolutely.
So there's some introductory things I won't say now, but, uh, uh, okay, following are some comments that relate to specific points mentioned in the developer's request for variances dated April 19 of this year. Throughout the submitted requests, phrases such as "the only way to" blank, blank, uh, "doing that necessitated tall building" blank, 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 and so on, these statements imply that this current proposal is the only possible development plan for the land in question. And to do what is proposed, this is the only way to do it. That is obviously not the case. This land could be used for any number of ways, which wouldn't require the requested various, uh, variances. And now to address the variance criterias individually, uh, variance criteria number one, special circumstances exist such that an unnecessary hardship would be imposed by a literal application and enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance. The developer's request for zoning variances says, quote, "This property is unique in that it is about 14.18 acres in size, with wetlands and topography that limit the buildable footprint of the property to 11.49 acres." Also, uh, with the limitations imposed by the wetlands and zoning code requirements which specify spacing between the buildings, so on and so on. And also it says, "The shape, topography, and configuration of the lot and wetlands located on the property make it difficult to manage drainage and driveway slopes and are a special circumstance unique to this property and its environment," unquote. All of this is very true and would suggest that this property is not at all a suitable location for the proposed development. We're being told this is a great site for this type of development, except for this, 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 and this. So maybe it's not a great site for that type of development. And as a gentleman who I didn't catch his name, a gentleman who just spoke from a different part of town evidently, brought up, um, trashing existing zoning regulations, which have been carefully thought out, I would hope, and implemented in countless cases over the years, is not the way to proceed. Uh, variance criteria number two, the relief sought is a minimum necessary to result in reasonable use of the property. Reasonable use is obviously subject to interpretation. The developer's proposal is not the only use for the land possible that could be called reasonable. In fact, with so many obstacles to overcome, I would dare say the proposal is indeed not reasonable. Criteria number three, um, says authorization of a variance will not be contrary to the public interest. From the developer's request, it has said, quote, "The public interest in prescribing building height is based on two considerations. The first is the visual impact of the building itself. The second consideration focuses on accessibility by emergency services. Neither of these public interests is very significant in this site. Three-story buildings are not visually imposing," unquote. I, for one, would heartily disagree that three 41-foot-tall, 343-foot-long buildings are not visually imposing when sitting adjacent to one-and-a-half-story houses and one-story commercial buildings. I know many other people who would agree with me as I wrote this and I said, hopefully, they are here tonight to say so. Um, they don't disagree with some of these things as much as I do, I think, but at least they showed up. Um, criteria number four, this says, "The spirit of this ordinance shall be observed and substantial justice done in the authorization of a variance." From the request that's been submitted, it said, quote, "The spirit of the ordinance is intended to foster, organize, and attract development that meets the community's needs. There is no question that the spirit of the ordinance is maintained," unquote. This is dependent on the developer's interpretation, obviously, of the spirit of the ordinance and requires that people living in the neighborhood, like myself, are not counted as members of the community. This development does not in any way meet any of my needs. And I can't see how it would meet any of my neighbors' needs. Uh, criteria number five, no, uh, I don't know how to say that word. Can I just say decrease? No, no, no decrease in the value of surrounding properties would be suffered as a result of the authorization of variance. This is a statement in the proposal. "No decrease in the value of surrounding properties would be suffered as a result of the authorization of a variance." And also from the request submitted to the board here, it has said, quote, "There is no decrease in surrounding property values that results from this development," unquote. "To make such a definitive declaration as this, I assume that hypothetical appraisals of all nearby commercial properties have been conducted and sent to the City of Concord Planning Board and the Zoning Board. If any appraisal of my property has been conducted in connection with this project and has shown no decrease in my property value, I would like to see a copy of that appraisal, since I seriously doubt that unsubstantiated claim." Uh, and then I finish up, um, very cheerfully by saying, "This letter makes me sound like a hostile naysayer." But I'm not that type of person and I am just trying to protect my peace of mind, my way of life. And I can't touch Mr. Carl Sargent as being in the neighborhood since the 50s, I think he said, when I was born. Um, but I'm trying to protect my peace of mind, my way of life in a pleasant neighborhood, which I have been a part of for over 30 years. And that's that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Is there any comment from code enforcement?
A couple things. Uh, the first one is just to, um, let the audience know, there is a 75-foot buffer requirement because it's a three-story building, so much of the perimeter will be maintained. It's required that a much, as much of the existing vegetation as can be maintained is maintained. So there will be a 75-foot buffer, um, from the adjoining neighborhoods. The other, the other is a concern I have, I'm a little, and I think some of the board members were as well, concerned that they don't quite, fully understand buildable acreage and I'm worried that there's some erroneous information as to how many lots could, how many units could be built on this lot. So if the applicant could just clarify what is actually buildable on this lot to reassure the board that the density does, did not also need a variance.
What's your calculation?
I don't, I don't, I don't have a representation of what the buildable acreage is on this lot. It, it's the applicant's, uh,
The applicant says about 10 acres, yeah.
... burden to say what variances they need. So I had no reason to question that they knew what buildable acreage was.
But the definition is, it excludes wetlands.
It excludes wetlands, it excludes slopes, and it excludes any easement areas.
But it doesn't include the setbacks or the buffer?
It does not, but there's, there's a lot being taken out of it in their plan and there's quite a bit of wetland, so I'm, I'm, and there's, there are some slopes. I don't know if any of them qualify without looking at the contours more carefully. But I am concerned that they stated they could put 240-some-one units on this parcel, which they could not.
He corrected himself, it, it, it was 140-something.
145, I think he said.
Well-
Well, they also said it was a total of 16 acres excluding taking out that 2.4-acre potential.
17-acre lot, so that doesn't work. I'm a little concerned.
17.
Okay, that's my only, that's my only, I'm just a little concerned.
We'll ask them to, uh, address that question. Very good. Mr. Best, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to what you've heard?
I mean, it would be a pretty big error on their part because it would mean if they build more than what they can, they'd-
Come back.
They'd-
Chairman, for the chance to come up and respond. Uh, I think, I, I want to start out with, uh, some of the comments that people had made about, um, visual impact and foliage and disturbing trees and things like that. And, um, two things I wanted to say about that. First, it, as we started out, um, this applicant doesn't build and sell and leave the community. Um, they're here, they own it, and they want to be a member of the community. They want to be good citizens and to get along with their neighbors. And they're always gonna be thoughtful in terms of how they approach that. Um, they're never going to be the kind of developer that just says, "I don't really care, the heck with the neighbor and your problem if that's what, if you don't like what it looks like." Um, they're very thoughtful, uh, very thoughtful developers and, um, would approach things that way. Uh, the second is those kinds of, uh, concerns about, you know, visual screening and even some of the wetlands and water and drainage and all of those kinds of things, as I'm sure you know, is the purview of the planning board, um, to dive into all of those things. And the planning board will certainly put us through maximum scrutiny if we're, if we are able to achieve these variances, um, in order to do that, as would DES with respect to the wetlands and wetland setbacks and all of that. Um, on sheet two of four of the submission, there is a no-disturb line behind the buildings that shows where you wouldn't see any of the trees being disturbed or, or changes to trees or wetlands or things. Obviously, if the planning board said you had to, um, uh, do, uh, plantings or something like that, that would potentially change that. Uh, let's see, I'm looking for, I think that's the one right there.
Isn't it? Yep, the next one.
Scroll down a little bit.
Right there? There, yeah.
That's the one where-
Right, so I see 14.18 acres?
That dotted line is the no-disturb for that part, that's the only thing I was trying to point out. Um, yeah, I'll let Matt deal with the acreage and the density. I know he's got that calculation down cold and I was fumbling it with 244 when there's only 144 building, uh, units intended. Matt, you wanna tackle that one?
Sure, um, just a couple things while you've got that plan up there too, just so the board members all can see, and I know you've had this plan in front of you, but we gave distances to all the homes and all the people that just spoke and you can see all their homes right there. Um, again, what I said to the board beforehand, I can put these units on the other side on Portsmouth Street. Right now, I've got over 600 feet from the gentleman in the lower right-hand corner. Mr. Perkins has over 600 feet from the upper right-hand corner. The gentleman next to him did not speak, but that one's about 500, over 550 feet. And then the neighbor to that is 263 right behind us. So again, we, as I said earlier, positioned these all to not be where I felt that most of my opposition would be and try to keep those units away so that that stays single-family on Portsmouth Street that's there. Um, as far as he said about landscaping, we hired terrain design out of Hopkinton, they're one of the best landscape architects around. Uh, Romy does wonderful work for us, she did the plans that are in your package here. The entrance is set up, but I completely agree, at the time, that house was still there. That house had been knocked down, I think that's why she didn't put any trees there, but we would obviously screen that, I don't have any concerns or issues with that. As far as the density, um, you are correct, so it's, the acreage was 16 acres. We have to take out a little power line easement that is down in the lower left-hand corner. Then we have to take out the wetlands and then we have to take out any slopes, which is unbeknownst to me, I thought it was 25 and over, until today, it's 15% and over.
Right.
So we took out the 15%. You end up with approximately 12.5 to 12.75 full acres, comes out to 182 units. We're here for the 144. Um, I, I, this morning, like I said, had it almost 200 because I thought it was 25% acre instead of the 15, but yes.
Thank you.
We're clear on, clean on that one. Um, and then just to touch upon the length of the buildings, um, I'm sure this board has seen it, the last year and a half, the Amazon distributions have been coming hot and heavy everywhere. The biggest reasons most cities and most towns look at lengths of buildings is to not have a 300-foot-long straight shot that you just see with all the same facade. If you look at our buildings here, we angled our buildings to have not that look, plus then we put on the porches, so your shot down is just not a look at just the straight shot of a building. That's typically, I don't know why you guys put yours, but in the towns I'm dealing with, that's typically why you have a length of building requirement is to break up the facade so you're not just seeing one big, long shot. These are residential. I really believe, I think you saw the other application next to the, behind the Target that asked for it too, was an L shape. These are facility, for a longer building. So I think, I know you've gone through the zoning changes the last three years, I know they're coming this year potentially. I don't know if they've changed the length of it, I probably should have looked that up. But usually the residential's are gonna be a little longer, it's more usually for your industrial-type uses. Again, we got elevators and stairs on both sides, elevators on both sides. It's a length thing that we set up that direction for that. Um, distance of home, length of building, neighbors. The sidewalk crossing, you know, we, we'd work on that there. I actually had to design the sidewalk to come up to the Chipotle. I actually had to design the sidewalk to come up to the Chipotle. That is being maintained currently by the owner of that site there because the city wasn't taking over that sidewalk until we extended further down Old Loudon Road. So right now, it's maintained by the private developer there. I just thought it made sense to tie a cross there, but that's a minor thing. And that's it. Thank you.
So I also, this is a copy of the PowerPoint that was given for everybody to be able to have it, and it's really just to call attention to the picture on the cover, which shows the whole building and how the facade is broken up, and the buildings have a little bit of an angle to them, and they're not sort of this side of a warehouse slab-sided, and so there should be some of those for everybody. I think one of the abutters specifically went through the specific variance criteria and offered his view of those, and I think we've offered our view and let that stand.
Good question. Maybe this was already mentioned. On the, now that I kind of see exactly where the buildings are going to be, they're on the Hodges property to the west, I believe, and then the Phillips property to the north, which is really the abutters that are closest. What sits on those lots? Are those feet?
There's a cell tower to the left, right on our property line. You can see the lines that are set up on there. And then there's a single-family home, the Phillips behind us, you're saying 4625?
Yeah.
46Z5? Yep. Single-family home.
So how close are, because you've got a building pretty close to that lot.
Yep, it's showing as 238 feet.
Oh, you've got it here, okay.
Yep, I labeled that one. You can see the aerials, I think you also had an aerial we had sent you in the package there, but it clearly shows the homes and kind of where they are.
And I assume that's pretty, pretty heavily wooded in between there, so they, they access Portsmouth Street?
They access off Portsmouth Street, correct.
I think, yeah, different folks will have different opinions about the way the building looks. I think that they are very attractive buildings, and especially compared to looking at the rear side of retail buildings, they're a far better streetscape, landscape view as it affects the neighbors.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a couple of variances, one for buildings that have a longer maximum dimension that is permitted by the ordinance, and another for buildings that are taller than is permitted by the ordinance. We heard testimony among other things that the number of units allowed on the property could not be built in the envelope that's available to them, notwithstanding the requirements of the ordinance, assuming they could be, without this forgiveness. Part of the reason for the height, we are also told, was the war conditions on the property as it relates to parking garages underneath the building. Andrew, what do you think?
I think you, you kind of, Chris just summed it up, you know, the gist of their argument pretty well, which is that they, they're not exceeding the number of built units that they can build, but to put them in the place that they believe is, is most suited for the lot and most respectful of the neighbors' needs, understanding, you know, that they are going to build up to their number of units, they kind of tucking them all in one place, which requires them to build higher and longer, and if not, they couldn't build their number of units, or they'd have to, they probably are saying they couldn't build at all the type of development they want to build, or they'd split it up and have more buildings but on sort of opposite sides of the lot, which wouldn't be very economical or aesthetic. I think it is, it's a challenging case because it really kind of epitomizes the tension in the zoning between sort of the development and sort of, the, sort of the natural progress, as one of the, the abutters put it, versus the, the, the needs or rights of the existing homeowners, who I, you know, I think all three of them spoke very reasonably and, you know, with balance. But given all the factors, I think that the variances they seek are not particularly excessive. They're not going, they're barely going higher than the height requirement, and I think the engineer's comments about the, the purpose of the length requirement and why that, a strict enforcement of that would not meet the, the purpose of zoning was, was persuasive. So I'd be inclined to approve the variances.
Laura?
I am not inclined to approve the variances. I think this is a great project in a great location with a great design that was designed in an effort to protect the abutters on Portsmouth Street. But the fact remains that you could get the same density in smaller buildings if you used those three acres over on Portsmouth Street. And I'm sure that's not going to make the abutters any happier, but the hardship doesn't arise from the land, it arises from the design choices and the desire to maximize the density. I think that the gain to the public from denying the variances is pretty small, given the location abutting a commercial area. But the loss to the individual is also pretty small because, again, they could design this in a way that uses more of the upland area. As for diminution of property values, we don't have any real evidence in the record. We have a representation that it wouldn't diminish surrounding property values, but, I mean, they gave us a traffic study, you know, they could have given us an appraisal or a real estate opinion on surrounding property values. As far as public interest and spirit of the ordinance, we heard conflicting testimony, but I do think the height and the length are consistent with the neighborhood. The abutting zone, you know, has a maximum height of 45 feet, this zone has a maximum height of 35 feet, this sort of splits the difference. The length and the height of the buildings don't cause a public health, safety, or welfare issue, given their design, but I think it fails unnecessary hardship, substantial justice, and diminution of property values.
I want to make sure I correctly understand something that was part of what you said. The, the calculation of the number of units starts with its numerator does not include the extra lot.
It does include the extra lot. That lot line does not currently exist.
So maybe we should make that, with the board's permission, I'll ask Mr. Best to clarify that one item. The 145 unit total, does that assume that this other lot has already, the trapezoidal lot has already been subdivided out, or does that assume that it's still part of it?
So the subdivision, the two acres, you asked me for the whole density of the parcel. That's 188. Subdividing out that two-acre parcel, I still have 144, 145 in mind.
Okay, that answers the question. Thank you. Thank you. Ted?
I think I disagree with some of the negative things on there. I think that the proposal is reasonable. I'm not concerned about the building height, the building length. Comments from the abutters had to do with visibility, and I think that's going to get covered, site plan review and other vegetation remaining, and so I don't think, and I think the property value, I don't think it's going to have an effect on, on those surrounding single families that are on a different road, essentially, most of them anyway. So I would be inclined to approve.
We heard testimony that the abutters that spoke would, would be at least almost two football fields away, 600 feet. If we did deny both variances, in order to get 144 units, you'd probably build a two-story building. I think in that, in that mode, that would probably create a hardship for all the abutters on Portsmouth Street. So I'm, I'm inclined to support the, the application based on that.
Even though I'm not voting, I'd like to input.
Absolutely.
It's not really inconsistent either. Oakbridge, if you think about that development, that's very publicly viewed, where this is going to have a 75-foot buffer of trees around it. It's in a more privately located area, it's going to be off of a main road, so it, and it's not going to be a heavily trafficked development. So I think that, you know, and I don't, I, with my experience, I don't think it's going to impact the values of the properties with that buffer in mind. And I think with the wetlands that do separate the space that's on Portsmouth Street and the space that's on Old Loudon Road, it makes sense to compact the neighborhood. I'm a big, a big proponent of leaving open land open as much as you can. So when you can put them closer together and leave open land open, it's, it's a good thing for the environment as well, so.
Do I have it correct that the, the buffer requirement is based on the height that they're proposing, not the height that they're allowed?
Correct. It's based on the number of stories.
Okay. So it's, in other words, they're allowed two, and the buffer is for, as if they were allowed three?
Correct.
Okay. I think both sides of the argument are pretty strong. I think the hardship to go, going with the land, I think there is one that's created by the presence of the slopes and the wetlands on the property. The use seems to me to be compatible with what's going on around it. It's, it's actually allowed by right. It's just the, the physical characteristics that we're being asked to address here. The, I have to take it on faith that it's not going to diminish the property values around it. There's nothing that I've seen that suggests to me that it would. I'm inclined, for those reasons, to, to, to approve. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Is this for both?
For both.
Oh, it's, who made the motion?
Motion's for both.
So is a second.
Motion, second word for both, yep.
I just, you know, I never discount what Laura says, and she speaks very articulately. I think that, so just to make the, make our record, because usually she makes our record, so since she's maybe in the minority, I think, you know, I'll try to just add on to what Chris said, that, you know, I think the hardship is the, the locations of the buildable spaces sort of being bifurcated would make, putting, would, makes it a hardship for them to have to, to be able to use all their units, which I think being able to use all their allowed units is a reasonable use in this location. And I, again, we don't typically have appraisals, sometimes we do, most often we don't, so without any real evidence, I don't see any evidence that there's diminution of values. I mean, they, something, a lot of units can be built here, so that's probably already really priced into the value of all the surrounding properties.
I, I think you, I do have to take into account the, the proposition that we're really looking at this as if that trapezoidal lot were not part of the proposal, because it's not. In other words, it's not part of what they're asking to do. But one of the things that I find persuasive about the compatibility of the project is the fact that they would be complying with the buffer requirements for buildings of the height that they are proposing to build, as opposed to lower ones, which creates insulation for the, for the neighbors, and I think would go a long way to assuaging the concerns that they raised. Okay, we had a, we have a...
Can I just ask one question? I'm sorry. If they change the description of this lot, taking out that trapezoidal lot, doesn't that avoid this variance because the description of the lot now changed? It's not the same lot anymore?
Uh, well, that...
That is a proposed subdivision, not an actual subdivision.
Right, but if it happens, isn't it going to avoid this variance?
Won't they have to get that separation approved later?
Right, but when you change the, when you change the description of a lot, it changes, according to our city solicitor, when you change the description of a lot, it, it makes it a new lot, so any previous variances would go away.
We, we have on several occasions made rulings based on proposed subdivisions that have yet to be done. So far as I know, none of them has been overturned.
Okay.
So, so I, if the city solicitor wants to straighten me out on that, then he, he will do so. But I, I think in this case, that may be a distinction without a difference, that, what they're showing us up here is, is what they're asking for.
I only mention it because we just went through quite a legal discussion with one of the variances that was recently approved and how to join the lots without voiding the variances.
Yeah, so it's, it sounds like maybe there's a technical issue that needs to be addressed at the administrative level and the legal level, but I think from the point of view of...
I just don't want the variance to be avoided if the lot description changes, if that's your intent to approve the variance.
So, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, I was just going to say maybe that's a good point for the consumer to just know not to make the subdivision until they're completed the variance, they're completed the work that they're doing, and then subdivide the lot, or?
No, we make the buildings illegal.
It, it's, it's, I, I think we have to proceed, I'm prepared to proceed, on the assumption that what we see is what we're being asked for.
Okay.
Well, I mean, and I was going to say the applicant has very capable counsel, and I mean, they'd be proceeding at their own, if that was a risk, they're going to have to make that determination. We, we can vote on this variance, not, if, if this variance turns out to be invalid, they'd be building at their own risk, and they'd have to, you know, make that, do that research and make that determination before they, they, you know, build.
Just a thought that I can, I wanted to...
And, and thank you for bringing it up, and thank you for reminding me why I didn't go to law school. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we've had considerable discussion. Is there any other discussion? The motion is to grant both variances. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay? The vote is four to one, with one member in the minority, Laura in the minority.
Do you mind if I just take a little break?
Absolutely. Go for it. You're welcome. Go for me while you're in there, will you?
I might as well, too.
Apparently, we're taking a little bit, brief break here, while everybody sorts himself out.
That's huge. I'm just, I know what you're saying, but just wanted, I put my fingers into it. Dear, just wanted to put it out there.
We'd like to, we'd like to begin again.
Yeah, it's fun. Yeah, we used to start at seven and they changed because we would get here at eleven.
Break is over.
You've got the cap building.
Yeah, I, I should-
You did have, you have one in your drawer.
Yeah, I, I should use it.
Yeah, right.
We, we have a, what I think is going to be a, a little bit of a change in the schedule tonight, which has come up just now, and I want to verify that that's the case. My understanding is that double zero forty-five twenty-two thirty and double zero forty-six twenty-twenty-three, I think twenty-two-
It's thirty Washington Street at the space that-
Okay. Anyway, the Washington Street and the one-seventy-seven North Main Street cases, the appellants are going to ask for a continuance, is that true?
Yes, correct.
Oh, you are my favorite appellants tonight.
Mr., Mr. Charlie, would you come on up?
Other people for those cases.
So, as I understand it, well, I guess for the record, we ought to identify-
I'm Jonathan Jourley.
And you're swearing to tell the truth and so on. That you're requesting that we adjourn this hearing, recess this hearing for how long?
Until the next meeting.
Okay. Very good. That would cover both of those two cases.
Correct.
The parking on Washington Street and then the development down on-
North Main.
North Main.
Uh, yes. Yes, it's the same project.
Yep, right, okay.
Explain why if you wish, or I-
Well, I don't think we need to know.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to recess the case till next month's meeting?
So moved.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It sounds like the vote is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
What that means, ladies and gentlemen, is that if you are here for case, either case double zero forty-five two-oh-two-three-oh, which is Washington Street, RD Downtown Residential District, Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, or one-seventy-seven North Main Street, CU Urban Commercial District, Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, we are not going to hear those cases this evening. We'll be visiting again together in a month, and we will hear them then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Previous one, you offered people the kind of a thing to speak even though the applicant didn't propose it, didn't attend. Are you going to offer the same opportunity?
Uh, not tonight.
They weren't here.
Is there a reason why you are handling this differently than previous?
Uh, we haven't, I'm not handling it differently than, you mean the one that, the second one that was on the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
We just set that aside, we're going to bring it up again tonight. And if the appellant's not here, that will get adjourned as well, or recessed as well. So we're not, we're not treating them any differently. We're not going to take any testimony at all on this case tonight.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, come here, or the butler, they hired me to come here today, is there something in the rules that governs the motions to continue, or is it due to the discretion of the board?
As far as I know, it's the discretion of the board.
So the people who came here tonight will be forced to come back again without the emergency?
Unfortunately, that's true. I regret it, but that is the case.
I just want to note that my clients and people here for this project just object to not being able to address the board before they continue.
Mr. Chair, can we just give his name for a minute?
Sure.
Attorney Brian Shaughnessy, and I'm here for the Islamic Society of Greater Comfort. I also know there are other butlers here that may be speaking in opposition to the application, who have also waited, didn't have an opportunity to talk.
I, as I say, I regret that. It's not something that's under our control, but we are going to follow our usual order of procedure with this case, which is to hear the appellant first and then go through testimony from others after that.
I just want to be able to explain it to my client in the point of order I'm asking for, is it within your control?
Yes.
You just said it was-
Discretion.
Yeah, it's within the control of the board, yes, yes. And maybe I misunderstood your question. We have the authority to recess a case at any time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor. And you.
There's another woman who was raising her hand there.
Yes, ma'am.
Will we notify, have we?
Yes.
No.
No, no, I'm sorry.
The notice is right now that it's at the next meeting, the next scheduled zoning board meeting, which is the first Wednesday of next month.
Now, you won't get another notice in the mail.
The first Wednesday of next month.
If you go on to the, confirm that on the zoning board's website.
It's the first in the newspaper, it's also on our website.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure it will be, but, ma'am, if, if you go on the website, I think, which was what Andrew was saying, you'll, for next month's meeting, you'll see it on the agenda.
That's all right. It's on the VDA website on the conference.
Yeah, you go, you go to the Concord City website, and then you go to city government, I think it is.
Wards and Commissions.
Wards and Commissions. And the agendas are listed under there, and you can see what's what there, because no, they won't renotice it because it's been adjourned, it wasn't.
You can always call the office as well, we can direct you more clearly.
And I apologize for misinforming you, it's probably not the only time I've done it tonight.
Do you need to jump down your throat about?
Well, it's a good thing you did. I was about to make a gaffe. All right, that brings us to, what, it brings us to case-
Twenty.
Twenty?
Forty-four, case oh four.
Yeah. Zero, zero forty-four, twenty-two-three-twenty, Talent Road, RO, Open Space Residential District. Julie A. Lane and Eric M. Summers are the owners, and the owners wish to add a second dwelling unit within the basement of their single-family dwelling and seek a variance to Article twenty-eight, two-four-J, Table of Principal Uses, to allow a duplex or two-family dwelling where such use is not allowed. Do you swear to tell the truth, sir?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
May, Eric Summers, owner, one of the owners, my wife is at home. So it'll just be me.
All right.
I wanted to just give you, just a brief background, I think I included a picture of the front of the house, but just so that if you, if you take a look at that, the actual back of the house slopes, and, and the basement is a walkout basement. And we built it, you know, on that part to have this walkout basement to give us room to expand. And the importance of that, from our perspective, was it creates really a one-floor living area, which was in keeping with, with, at one point, the original plan, which was to put an ADU in the basement for elderly parents, you know, for, for potentially a caregiver, for a wife and I as we age, you know, which would be, you know, in keeping with an ADU. When we went to finish this basement, we found out that the, the way that the floor, or that the, that the space is measured to, to see if it qualifies as an ADU, is really by measuring the outside walls. And it's a little bit of a surprise, because it, it doesn't really correlate to what the apartment or the finished space is really looking like in that, which is under the plan. The, the finished space that, that, the way I've calculated that, taking out the mechanics room in that basement, is about six-hundred-and-fifty square feet of, it's a one-bedroom, small kitchen, trying to make an ADA-compliant bathroom and a living space.
Ah, okay.
So, and, and really, I mean, we, we, finishing the basement, because we need the extra room, the, the house is fairly modest, it's two-thousand square feet roughly of living space right now. We need the extra space anyway, for the time being, but what triggers this is putting a stove in there. So we're sort of stuck. In the RO, we would be allowed to have an, an ADU, but because of this, the way this is being measured and the literal interpretation of the ordinance, it, it triggers, it, it says this is not an ADU anymore, it turns it into a duplex, which sounds way more than what this really is. It's not a duplex, it's not, it's not a additional, you know, it's not two-family house, really.
So effectively, it's a six-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot apartment with a really big boiler room?
Well, not that big, but, you know, about, about a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-forty feet.
I understand.
Utility room.
Very good. We have read your application, but if you'd like to touch on the, the points, that would be helpful.
Sure. Well, I, I think I touched on the fact that the, that the hardships really, it's, it's not so much the land, although the, the way the land is situated actually makes it the most appropriate place to put this. We're able to, to minimize the footprint of the house, you know, by putting it in the back, in the walkout basement, we don't have to build it, we don't have to have a bigger footprint to, which we could do, you know, by right, under the, under the ordinance anyway. We could, we could have a six-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot or seven-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot addition to the house, but this way we keep it a little bit more compact on the footprint by, by putting it in the basement. So, you know, from that perspective, I, I guess that's the hardship, but it's really more the interpretation of the way the statute's being applied, or the, the ordinance is being applied. We're really looking for, I mean, the minimum standard, the, the minimum variance is really just to allow that, that measurement to be, you know, to, to call it, I guess we could call it an ADU, we could call it a duplex, whatever we want to call it, but to allow us to build it, we're putting it in, in the existing home, we're not expanding the home, we're putting in, we're not building over a garage where we'd have to have additional steps, and, you know, anything additional, we can put it in already a heated space, so it's a, it's a, and, and from the neighbor's perspective, there's no, there's no visual difference, the house is as the house was built originally. And I think it's also in keeping with the, the statute, or the, the ordinance, and the statute that allows ADUs, because that's really what it is, it's an in-law apartment, and putting it in, in, inside the home. So I think that meets all the criteria. There doesn't seem to be any evidence that, again, since, since-
About the ADU that would not necessarily be true here is that on the ADU, I believe that it has to be owner-occupied, but in the primary space, right?
So what I was going to recommend that came up in discussion at a recent meeting in the, with staff, is that if you want to treat this as an ADU in your approval, you can always condition it that all the other ADU criteria be met and that it never be condoed, so that it'll always stay one and meet all of the other criteria of an ADU.
Yeah, and, and that's always been the intent. When we put this, when we built this house, this was a house that we built specifically so we could age in place and have elderly parents move in and, you know, extended family. And so it's, it's never been the intent to make it a two-family, which is why when it came out, on the agenda as a, as a two-family or duplex, it was sort of like, well, that doesn't seem to really make sense to me, because that's not what we were looking for, we're just looking for the, to be treated as a, as a permitted use under the ADU portion and just grant the variance on the size requirement.
So, yeah, I'm glad you said, my recollection is that Craig had, had felt that he didn't like that kind of condition, maybe I'm wrong, and that had kind of hamstrung us a few times, so if you, you know, if you feel comfortable-
And the deputy solicitor just used it on something else.
Yeah.
Similar but not variance-type of case, so.
I had already written it down.
Yeah, so if you're comfortable with that, you know, I think that makes sense.
You know, frankly, when we went to the town, I said, I said, we're just going to apply for this, I tried to apply for it, and then Tracy pointed out to me that if you look at the measurements, it doesn't work, so that was really our intent, is to come and just ask, you know, with all the conditions that were met, for the, for this finishing of this basement.
Very good. Other questions from the board? Yes, Ted.
I'd just like to understand the square footage issue. So in this plan, are we including that storage space? Is that part of the measurement?
No.
Just the, the rectangle that includes the bedroom, living, kitchen, bathroom, and utility areas, is that correct?
Right, and, and what, what seems to be confusing to me is I, I look at this and it talks about habitable, you know, the space that's intended to be habitable, and I don't know if that means that you occupy it, or, but, but this, this house is sort of built as two, it's a timber-framed house, and it's built as sort of two, two separate barns that are, you know, I mean, essentially two rectangles that are connected, so that's storage space that's underneath that area, that's just a, a storage area, and it's not, it's not being included in the, in the square footage.
What is the actual square footage of the, of this living space here?
The, you mean the, the interior, the, I mean, not counting the-
What we're counting is the square footage of this unit, what is the, what is the actual square footage?
Well, it's, it's a little, it, it depends on, on exactly how you work it out, but the way I calculated it without, if you, if you go from the inside of the finished walls, that perimeter, because again, timber-framed house, so it's fairly, it's got a very, it's got ten, ten-inch, you know, foundation thickness to support the, the structure, you really come down to eight-hundred-and-sixty square feet inside that rectangle. And then I was going to take out the utility room, which I calculated, which is locked out, it has all the, it has all the mechanical systems, and it's about a hundred-and-thirty square feet. So now we're down to seven-hundred-and, about seven-hundred-and-thirty square feet, you know, give or take.
That mechanical area for the entire house?
For the entire house, yeah. So it's, it's heat, it's, it's an air conditioning system, it's a, it's an air exchange system for the house.
Not just for this basement unit, it's for the entire house?
No, no, it's, it's the whole, the, the whole house was, you know, was put together as, you know, one unit that, that does the whole, much like you would have, you know, in a traditional in-law apartment, we're not putting separate units in.
So the question I have is, can we, can we authorize an ADU with a variance, with a, with a variance that exceeds the square footage?
You can't authorize a variance on something that requires a special exception.
Yeah, we had this, we've had, we've had this before.
Yeah, we've had that question before, and the answer is no, we can't.
I disagree with that, but that's okay. I don't represent the city. But for all intents and purposes, that's what we're doing.
The special exception is approved here?
Yes.
We would be, if they were asking for one, yeah.
Right.
But it creates a tangle because of the two different requirements. If both were required a variance, I suppose it wouldn't be a different story.
And I think we've been told we can't grant a special exception with a variance.
You can't grant a variance from a special exception criteria.
Yeah.
You would have to grant a variance for the use that is no longer permitted by special exception.
Which is what we're being asked to do. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal or in opposition to it? The record will show that there was no one to testify, any other comments from the committee?
No, I think I made my only point.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. I'm going to send the ball down the chute to Nick. What do you think about this one, Nick?
We've seen a lot of this in the last few years, and we tend to, to be granting them to say it's just a continuation of what we've been doing.
Ted.
I would agree, I think it's a very reasonable use.
I think the can, the configuration of the house does create a hardship in this case, and there's absolutely nothing in the intent of the ordinance that this conflicts with, so I'd be inclined to support it as well. What do you think, Laura?
I concur. With the conditions of approval, that neither unit shall be conveyed separately, and one unit must be owner-occupied.
Very good.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not getting too hung up on the square footage, even if he wanted to use, you know, all of the space to make it finished, I, I wouldn't have a problem with that, because it's consistent with the current layout of the structure, he's not adding on it all, which most ADUs are, so in that sense, it really has no additional position on the, on the neighbors.
Very good. Laura, since you had the condition in your remarks, do you want to make a motion?
Yes. I just had a question. So are you approving it as an ADU or as a two-family?
As a two-family.
As a two-family.
Okay.
But with the design that we have here, it is in effect an ADU.
Again, for my learning purposes, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. This isn't the first time this has happened, it happened the last month or two months ago.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the variance to allow a second dwelling unit, based on the plans that have been submitted. There's a hardship in the existing configuration of the house, there is nothing about this that would be inconsistent with the neighborhood or would create a public health or safety, welfare issue, there's going to be no diminution of value, and there is no gain to the public from denying this variance. I would condition my approval on two conditions, one, that the lots shall not be conveyed separately or condominiumized, and that at least one unit must be owner-occupied.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. And that brings us, you're welcome, to double zero forty-seven twenty-two-three ninety-nine Peaceful Lane, RO Open Space Residential District, within the SP Shoreland Protection District overlay. Robert Baskerville is the owner. The owner wishes to remove a damaged six-foot-by-nineteen-foot addition on the northern side of the dwelling and replace it with a twelve-foot-by-twenty-six-foot addition, and seeks a variance from Article twenty-eight four-one, Table of Dimensional Standards, to ally side yard setback of twenty-six feet where forty feet is required. Sir, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but? May we have your name for the record, please?
Robert Baskerville.
What would you like us to know?
I bought this building in, on March thirtieth. It was originally built in nineteen-twenty by Mr. Hobbs, sold to the U. by Mr. Hobbs, sold to the Langley family in nineteen forty-one, his friend, and they've had it ever since then. I just bought it from their grandchildren. It's a great old structure, made out of Carolina red pine, that I think was all originally made to be in railroad cars. Mr. Hobbs was a long-term employee of the B&amp;M Railroad. No insulation, no wallboard. I've got hardwood floors, hardwood exterior walls, hardwood interior walls, and a hardwood ceiling, all visible. So, the inside looks great. But the, I'm sure they built it in nineteen twenty, and then one of the hardships is they built it on the highest piece of the land. That one corner way over to the east, on the current flood maps, is the only corner outside of the floodplain. So, at the time, in nineteen twenty, there's no setbacks. They built it on the highest piece of land. So, they're having it in the setback, and I think it's partially due to the floodplain. And I'm sure in nineteen twenty, when the outhouse went in, which is still on the lot, that was the state-of-the-art sanitary facility, and everybody was fine with it. Obviously, nobody uses an outhouse now. If you go to the picture I submitted of the current bathroom, there's been no maintenance in a very, very long time, and my girlfriend has told me that that bathroom is as unacceptable as the outhouse.
I don't blame her. I saw the picture.
Yeah, she says, there's no way. And then beyond that, a tree fell on it, broke up the roof above the toilet. They never fixed it. The wood, the ceiling is rotten, the floor is rotten. Most of the addition is rotten. My original intent was to take down that addition and put one in big enough to do a modern bathroom, which is still the intent. The whole, the final architectural plans aren't done until we're done here. I'm leaning toward putting in a bathroom. And I originally was going to remodel the kitchen, but I fell in love with the old kitchen, the old big wood stove and the big cistern up top and the two-handled pump to fill it with water. And I'd kind of like to keep that as a historic part of the house. So, they, I live in Bedford in apartment. It's great. Two parking spots below the building. In the winter, I never shovel snow. I never have to clear snow off my car. But in the summer, I can't even cook a steak on the patio. This is for my use, long-term, in my family, as a seasonal home. But I'm going to keep all of the old wood, no insulation in the old part of the house. I love the old windows. I'm not going to replace them. It all stays the same, same color scheme, same siding, same design. Everything stays the same. The current addition is on the back eastern part of the house, and the butter behind us is probably, his nearest house is probably a thousand feet away. This is four acres, and I own a thousand feet of river frinage. So, then when you go to the west, there's nobody at a thousand feet. The neighbor right next door just sold, and I talked to the home, the current owner of that, and he gave me a letter that hopefully he has a copy of, that he's in favor of what I'm doing. And it's the nearest house, which is on the east side. So, I'm looking to just modernize the house, put in a bathroom, small kitchen, go in there and treat this house the way it deserves. I probably should go through things a little slower, but hopefully...
No, the pace is just fine.
Pace is just fine.
And you're not coming any closer to the side property line than the existing house?
No, I'm not coming in. The addition's bigger.
Right.
But no, I won't be any closer to the sideline. I won't be any closer to the river.
Yep.
Because it's behind the house.
Yep.
It'll, the whole neighborhood will be improved. They use this extremely lightly over the past twenty years. A new septic system went in in two thousand twenty. I do plan to put in a drilled well. I do want to state that the architect has told me that I probably have to put a foundation, not under just the addition, but the whole house. Is this, it is on old wood piers, and then at some point, they put concrete piers under the wood piers. But along the west side, and there's a picture in your package, when they put the septic system in, it tilted all those piers in and damaged them all. And the architect says, there's no way I'm getting an addition in on the backside without damaging all of those. They're not poured in place. They're just stacked. So, I'm getting prices to put a foundation under the whole building. But the structure itself won't change. The woods are in great shape. It was never heated. Well, I think there was somebody in there full-time for decades. I think the original parents lived there for decades, but the wood is in great shape. It always stayed dry. I could talk for a longer period, but basically, I want to, I fell in love with the structure. I love it.
It's beautiful.
It's really cool. And I'm a little older. I just get to do a project now. I'm trying to step back from my own business, so I take two days a week and I don't go to work. It's great.
So, does the, does the main road there dead-end right into your driveway?
Yes, right. I was told, and they owned a, I now own a lot across the river, Fifty-Nine River Road, that the original access was always from across the river, and that all of the material to build the house came from across the river. I was told that Mrs. Langley used to put on a big swim cap and swim across the river to get the mail, and she used to put it in her hat and swim back across the river. They didn't get an access to come in through Peaceful Lane until twenty years ago. I think they had access before that, but the access to this was always from across the river.
Interesting.
And with a note, I didn't then know what the frontage was. So, I put a fifty-foot request in my package, not knowing what the setback was. Staff determined it's probably, or it is, forty feet. So, I'm actually requesting a variance from the forty-foot setback, where I put down a fifty, just because I didn't know any better.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from Cohen?
Just that you had the...
Oh, yes.
Letter you referenced in front of you this evening.
Yeah.
That's my only comment.
Yeah, we have that letter in the record from the, from Ryan Schrefler, Schrefler, that supports the application. Very good. Well, that will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and I will ask Ms. Specter Morgan to read off.
Sure.
Please.
I would be inclined to grant this variance. I think there is special conditions of the property because of the floodplain and because of the location of the existing house, which is almost entirely within the, well, the fifty-foot setback that's shown, but now we know it's a forty-foot setback. The addition will not be coming any closer to the side property line than the existing house. This does not appear to me that it's going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood or create a public health, safety, or welfare issue, and it will not diminish surrounding property values. In fact, the butter is in favor of it.
Very good.
Was that a motion?
That was...
That can be a motion.
It was an observation. It was, it was an opinion.
It will become a motion.
What do you think, Ted?
I agree. I agree. Ditto.
Nick?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Andrew?
I also agree.
All right, then, we assume, Ms. Specter Morgan, that what you just made was a motion?
Let's make that a motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No one is opposed. The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted. You're welcome.
Good luck.
That brings us back to case double zero forty-one dash twenty-twenty-three, Seventy Store Street. Is there anyone here for that case? Apparently not.
I will contact them.
Okay.
Should we do a motion to continue it to the next meeting?
All right. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, or is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
So, we'll keep these for the next one.
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah. Do I hear a motion to approve last...
So moved.
...minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Abstained.
And no one, one abstention and four ayes.
So, we should hold on to the homeless application and...
Yeah, I guess we need to hold on to those, too.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, they do all those.
Just make sure I'm...
Tracy, do we need to bless these?
Yeah, do we need to bless them?
Do we need to bless the order granting of variance forms?
I was assuming you just did it as a big lump, but...
Okay.
You want to do separately, you can.
No, your assumption was correct.
Yeah.
Last month, we did it separate, so you hadn't confused.
Don't run anywhere, though.
Try to keep you guessing.
Okay.
So, adding Mr. Turley's applications to next month, we now have eleven for June.
Can we do two meetings?
And the deadline's not on Monday.
It won't be needed, I'm sure.
I think, it's...
I am not ready yet, Ted.
I think we're probably going to want two meetings, because Mr. Turley's is going to be a long one.
What's the order? Does his, do his go first? Because a lot of those people waited for two hours.
His will be first, but there are now nine others past his, so...
And there's going to be a lot of people speaking.
I think we should, we should assume that we're going to need two meetings and...
And we'll do the first and the second week, as you generally do.
Yeah, if that's available, we'll just have to make sure we can drum up a crowd.
Yep. I just wanted to put that out there since I see an impending...
Thank you for spotting that coming.
Can you notice that now, or everyone's got to come for the first week, and then you tell them?
I'll work with the chair to see if we want to actually split the agenda.
Okay.
Once I get all, because the deadline's not for another half a week, so I don't